I need to order stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so before we get started with a quick presentation on Safe Streets and Roads for All, which is federal grant funding, let's just do an approval of the minutes first. So if I could get a motion to approve the minutes for October 8th, 2024 work session and special meeting, October 10th, 2024 budget workshop, October 15th, 2024 regular meeting, October 16th, 2024 budget workshop, and October 29th, 2024 special meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Marais?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Roxton?
Yes.
Mr. Wardhouse?
Yes. Is there any public comments on agenda items?
Andy Puskowski, a quick question. In regard to the contract proposal, are there any productivity initiatives that you asked for with the union negotiations?
So what I would say is that the purpose of this union contract was to, I mean, look, we're always working with union members to figure out the best way to get the job done. But I actually think we worked pretty efficiently in terms of getting the work done. And I can say in the past, we have looked at the past at, you know, the idea of, you know, doing something with sanitation. We looked at that very closely, and we found that it was actually going to cost the town more money to outsource our, well, no.
Productivity initiatives.
So I would say we looked at safety initiatives, which cost the town money. We looked at ways to, to make sure that we have a happy workforce. Because you know what? Employees that feel that they're working for supervisors and for leadership to feel respected and don't feel like they're mistreated, they tend to work better than those that feel like they're just being taken advantage of. And so I think we've done a good job here at the town of ensuring that. And so that's my overarching goal, how do we make sure that we have a happy workforce? How do we make sure that we are going to have good leadership in place? And also, how do we make sure that, because from having all those things in place, you actually end up getting more productivity out of, out of your employees versus trying to follow them around town, make sure that they're not getting coffee in the village or they're not doing this and sort of like, we don't want to, I find that micromanaging employees isn't the best way to get the most out of them. And I think we do a good job of like letting our employees that are skilled and trained and have lots of years of experience do the job. And I, I also think that our highway superintendent does a good job when you come into town hall here. You know, really very few employees are actually in the union when you come to town hall. It's really not that many. So we're really looking at the, the police department, which has not settled yet. So we're still working on that. But this, this is mostly highway sanitation, buildings and grounds mostly goes back to the highway department. And I, I, I think we're doing a good job. I think the board would, you know, the board would certainly agree to that. I, I would think for the most part, yeah, I would certainly, if the board felt like there was anything that we were missing through this process, we could have done that. But I, I, I think we did a good job. And so I, I think we're ready to adopt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? No? Okay. Oh, sorry.
Hi, Jeff McElroy, I'm from thirty Hasbro.
Yes.
I understand we're going to be talking about the golf course and giving money back to the golf course for their current state of completion. I just want assurances from everyone here. Spoke with supervisor and the engineer earlier today regarding, you know, the issues we're having with flooding from the golf course. I just want everyone to be aware that, you know, it's been dry, obviously. It hasn't really rained, so we don't know what's going to happen with the improvements. I would just like assurances that everyone's on board with making sure that those things are fixed before the golf course has given all of their money back. Because we're the ones that have to live with the downstream side of it. So I just wanted to bring that up in, in a public setting and ask for that assurance before, you know, we send the next amount of money back.
Yep, that's fair. I'll, I'll talk more about that when we get to that, to that item.
Okay.
Is there anybody else? No? Okay. So we have here Safe Streets and Roads for All. We have Frank here from Lobella. You may remember Frank, he was, he, at the time, he worked for Craig Mann, who did our Main Street Parking Study. And so he's here today to talk to us about this great federal funding program.
What would you like me?
You could just, I guess, yeah, just kind of go there and then I'll just go through the slides. Block the camera. It's all right.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. Again, Frank Filichoto with Lobella Associates. Lobella's a multidisciplinary firm, architects, engineers, planners, 14 offices throughout New York State, a few here in the Hudson Valley. I specialize particularly in transportation. I've talked over the years with, with the supervisor about initiatives that are possible to make roads and streets safe, more walkable, more pedestrian friendly, complete streets is the buzzword. And what I wanted to do tonight is share a grant opportunity at the federal level called Safe Streets for All. We'll talk a little bit about what that is. We'll talk about the Safety Action Plan application requirement. Every municipality that applies for funding at the federal level needs to complete a Safety Action Plan. We'll talk about some recent project examples and then challenges and lessons learned. The map on the left, if you just, it is supposed to represent communities, counties that have benefited from this funding since it was first instituted in 2022. This is a federal program that runs five years. There's $5 billion committed to it. There are about $3 million, three, sorry, $3 billion spent of the $5 billion. So there's still about $2 billion left in it, runs through 2026. And it waits to be seen if that program is extended. Hopefully it will be. So a lot of that I just explained, but 1,400 communities. I checked the website today, it's actually gone up to 1,600. So 1,600 communities in all 50 states and Puerto Rico have benefited from this program. Interestingly, 43% of the communities, which include villages, towns, counties, are under 50K. So there's no necessarily, you don't have to be New York City, you don't have to be Detroit or any, you know, large city in order to benefit from this funding. And there's about $2 billion available still. The purpose of this funding is to create a direct path from the Safety Action Plan to implementation. A lot of times when municipalities do studies, they get money for studies and studies only. The study's done, it sits on a shelf, and then when there's either more money or political will or will in the community to advance some of those recommendations, then it can be done. Sometimes that's years later, the recommendations get stale and nothing happens. The purpose of this funding opportunity is to create a life cycle that is compressed, that allows you to, to get Safety Action Plan money and then make an application to implement the recommendations of the Safety Action Plan with the goal being to prevent serious injuries and deaths. So here's a typical timeline. The notice of funding opportunity, the NOFO, historically over the last couple of years has come out before March 30th. So we're looking at March 30th of 2025 as when the NOFO will come out for round one of the Safety Action Plan. Every year, there are three opportunities to submit fund, to submit grant applications for the Safety Action Plan and one opportunity to submit for implementation grant opportunities. So typically what happens is if you're awarded Safety Action Plan money, it takes about 12 months. So if that was awarded, let's say next spring, by the following spring of 2026, you'd be in a position to apply for implementation grants. So it's important, just because we don't know where this program is going beyond 2026, we're seeing a lot more interest in it now because it takes 12 months to do a Safety Action Plan and you need a Safety Action Plan in order to get implementation money, which is what everyone really wants to see. Minimum grant amount for the implementation is 2.5 million, so it is a significant amount of money that can be awarded. I'll just give an example, the Village of Warwick recently awarded a half a million dollars for the Safety Action Plan. Half a million dollars for a plan is a lot of money, especially for a village of that size. So these, this is a fairly generous program. And, you know, again, the goal is, is to get projects from the planning stage through implementation in a relatively short period of time. Work does need, need to be completed within five years of the award. The purpose of the Safety Action Plan, which would be step one, is essentially you define a study area and there have been examples where municipalities have collaborated together. The most recent one I can think of is the Villages of Sleepy Hollow and Terry Town in Westchester made an application together and got money. Those villages are very tight. It made me think a little bit about Village of Cornwall and Hudson and the town of Cornwall, there could be an opportunity to go in, go into this together, create a larger study area, get more bang for the buck. So this is the, the grant application, you need to define a study area, you need to report some basic metrics, metrics that are widely available in the community population, how many fatalities have occurred over a five-year period, how many annual fatalities per 100,000 people in your population, and then there's a disadvantaged track question about, about your community. The written narrative, it's a two-page written narrative. It used to be 300 words, they've extended it to two pages. We put up here that it's, it's, there's a high potential for award funding with a relatively minimal effort to complete the application. We're not talking about a 50-page treatise. It's a, it's a fairly short application, concise, talks about injuries, crash trend, crash trends, and provides some community context, maybe a statement about the goals of the community, what it's looking to achieve. There is a 20% local match, so it's an 80/20, it's federal, so you have to take that into consideration. My understanding is it's not a, you don't have to fund all 100%. You can, it's sort of like a drawdown, so you would submit invoices to the feds and it would draw down from, from the grant amount, but there is a 20% local match. Next slide. So the major components of the Safety Action Plan is obviously you want to state your goals, what you're trying to achieve with the, you know, clear statement around reducing roadway fatalities, reducing serious injuries, protecting pedestrians, the most vulnerable road users. There's a heavy engagement piece, so the community is directly engaged throughout the process. That is considered a hallmark of the program. There's a detailed safety analysis that's done. And then there are obviously policy strategy and then a statement of what types of projects the community is interested in implementing. So you need to, you need to explicitly state what projects and strategies are going to be sought in the implementation grant application. The purpose here obviously is progress and transparency. The more data you have, the more you're looking at it, the more you're aware of certain hot zones in your community. I'm sure we all know of dangerous intersections, but when you look at the actual data, you might learn something about a completely different intersection in roadway that you didn't know and be able to address it as part of this project. There's also countermeasures allow you to look at before and after, you know, the implementation process, you can look at crash data before and then look at it after to see if the intervention is achieving the goal. Safety Action Plan potential countermeasures, there's all sorts of things in this toolbox, starting with speed management. So the Safety Action Plan can recommend all of these types of things, speed safety cameras, reducing or changing your speed limits, looking at traffic calming measures like median barriers or wider edge lines. Intersection improvements could include roundabouts or reduce left turn conflict intersections, changes to traffic signal timing, a whole host of things can be done on the active transportation side, the petting bikes, bike lanes, walkways, road diets, crosswalk visibility enhancements, all sorts of things that provide a lot of bang for the buck when it comes to protecting vulnerable road users. Highway lighting is included. These little icons here are new components that have since been added as eligible components of the Safety Action Plan. The lessons we've learned is that it's, it's been a fairly consistent grant cadence with the Safety Action Plan grants being available three times per year, the implementation grants being available only one time of year. So it's really key to know, especially as we're coming towards the end of the program, you need about 10 to 12 months to complete your Safety Action Plan. So it's key to get in that first round of Safety Action Plan application cycles that you have enough time to complete it if you're awarded and then, you know, look to do the implementation grant. I kind of went over that, the 10 to 12. The, this is, this is more of the requirements, but we can move through this. But here are some examples. We've been members of my new team and Lobella have been connected with three, I'd say, pretty large Safety Action Plan and Implementation Funding Opportunities. This CDTAs, the Capital District Transportation Authority, they run all the public transportation in the Albany, Schenectady and Troy area. They receive 5.3 million for implementation. The Village of Kiris Joel here in Orange County received $260,000 for Safety Action Plan. And the regional planning, the MPO for the Lake, Chana Plain and Lake George area off state New York received $320,000. And like I said, Village of Warwick received $500,000. It's, it's really quite remarkable, the amount of money that is available. And I, I don't want to oversell it because I don't have a crystal ball, but we are seeing communities similar to Cornwall get, you know, meaningful funds to do these types of things. So it's exciting that this program is still available funded through 2026. So here's kind of a, a pathway, I'll, I'll leave you with this. This kind of summarizes where we are now and then kind of lays out the process to get you to, through the implement, through the SAP grant award, which would then set you up for an implementation grant in 2026. But essentially what would happen is, you know, in January, you want to start thinking about how to go about making grant, if it's of interest to you, of course, submit that in April, which based on historical cadence is when that first grant application is, is due. May is actually the second one, and then there's an implementation grant application in May. And then you find out really around June, July, if you're going to be an awardee. So in July, you have to then move to RFP for a consultant to perform the Safety Action Plan. The key thing here is that, you know, the grant assistance can be done almost at the town level, it's not a heavy lift. There are some issues with ineligible firms having done the grant and then being ineligible for the Safety Action Plan. So it's the type of thing that there needs to be some thought given to how you want to see this through. But basically, by July of 2025, you will have moved to, to retain that consultant and then you're off to the races after that to do your Safety Action Plan, start engaging the community. So hope that provides kind of a high-level view of it. Happy to answer any questions. I know you have a packed agenda, so however you want to proceed. Thank you for the opportunity, of course. I think it's a, it's a good program that's being used right here in Orange County, so I wanted to make sure you're aware of it.
Board members? Questions? So I, I guess my question would be...
Hello, Josh?
Oh, yes, hey, Virginia, yes, sorry.
Hi. First of all, I think it's a very informative presentation. I think the only comment is that we're also collecting data on traffic patterns, activities that are going on, like on county roads. Should we have that data all collected before even moving towards applying for something like this?
So on Agola, I know on Agola...
Just to check the shape of what we're saying, what we're looking for.
I know, so on Agola, on Quaker, on Willow, I know we have plans to put up permanent speed signs when we eventually get approved by the county. Apologize if that's happened. I know we've collected some data because we've had residents concerned about, you know, speeding, we've submitted a number of applications to state DOT.
What is that related to this presentation?
Because you would use this data, so we've already kind of started down the path of like, we want to reduce, you know, the speed limit or we have, you know, residents on roads that want certain traffic, traffic calming measures or we, so we've already kind of started this, but not like in any, I guess I would say coherent strategic manner. We've just done it in a piecemeal when people come to us and say, hey, there's car speeding, you know, we want you to do something about this, right? But nothing in a comprehensive, you know, strategic way. So we have like some data here and some data there, but we don't have a safety plan. I mean, that's clear.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, look, certainly, I think...
I was just asking our presenter, you know, what, what is his thoughts? Like what would be the, you know, we're new at, obviously, we're in the early stages of, like you're saying, the studying, collecting this data. When will be, when would you recommend that we would be ready to actually?
Apply for a safety, for a...
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say, Josh.
Yeah, you know, you don't, you don't really need to do a lot of legwork beforehand. You know, again, like I said, the grant is, the grant itself is really not heavy. You have a two-page application with some data that probably, you know, a conversation with PD could, you know, could achieve with, you know, how many fatalities have occurred, whether serious injuries, that all goes into the application. So I think, you know, providing some context about the community and overarching goals, but I don't think the expectation is to have, you know, ironclad ideas about what this wants, what, what this will achieve. You can, you can keep it flexible.
Yeah, because I guess if you get the safety plan, then you would have the funds to go in and start really digging in and...
That's right.
Looking at stuff coming up with...
Thank you.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you for explanation.
Yeah, I mean, look, I know I'm certainly interested, but I think we'd have to kind of talk offline to sort of see how, like, I know with some of these federal grants, like for instance, we've had scenarios where whoever is writing the grant and submitting it, then can't be the consultant. So you have these, and we've, we've like run into this with like MAG too. So, you know, it comes down to like, do you use a separate grant-writing firm to write it, but then you hire the skilled traffic engineer to, to do the, the work? So the, the, these are all things we'd have to like work out if we decide to go for it. Now, the Village of Warwick, you're the council there, so you know a little bit about that too.
We know a little bit about it.
Okay. Well, it's lucky for us. Or maybe not lucky, I don't know. Kidding, jokes. But, uh, so yeah, so I think, I think certainly, you know, we'll, we'll talk offline about this and then it sounds like if we're gonna, this is coming out in January, I mean, this is like the anticipated, but it's not been released yet.
The NOFO, the NOFO has not come out after March 30th of the year. So January, February, hopefully. And then that's when you can actually submit, you can't submit before.
Yeah, you know, who knows? And I guess we'll have to see what happens with them passing a budget too.
Well, uh...
So is, so is this...
This is funded through...
The program's been fully funded, so there's no issues with, with any, okay.
Correct.
That's good.
Yeah, the key is, is what happens in 2027.
Gotcha, so when they funded it, they funded a certain amount to go for a certain number of years? Okay, gotcha, well, that's good.
Yeah, so what I, what I've asked myself is, you know, you're not submitting, unless they extend the program in 2027...
Yeah.
It would not make sense to submit a Safety Action Plan, uh, grant in 2026. If there's not clarity on what's coming after.
Yeah, I mean, this may be the last like full year opportunity to kind of like get this in the queue because we don't, that's kind of, okay, that's what I'm gathering here.
Yeah, because there is a...
Yeah. All right, so is there any Tommy, Chief Gepper, Deputy Supervisor, any questions on this? No?
Well, my question is, how is your organization involved in this? Do you help us write the grant?
So, good question. We've done that, we've, we have grant writers on our staff who specialize in multidisciplinary grants. What the supervisor said is very true, you, you can make yourself ineligible if you wrote the grant, only the grant, and then appear again as a, as a respondent to an RFP. However, there has been, there have been RFPs that have been structured in ways to take you all the way through. So it's for grant writing, it's for Safety Action Plan, and it's for implementation. That, I think, is above board, but obviously, you know, you need to, you need to go through the process and, and talk it through, but I hope that helps.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, so if, if no further questions, I guess we'll be on to the third, yes?
Does funding would apply only to projects on town-owned roads, correct?
No, it actually can go on county and state roads. What would happen is that the state and county could become partners in the Safety Action Plan. You would need to obtain whatever requisite permits, like if you were doing work on 9W or 218, let's say, you would need to get the DOT's blessing. But if you're involving them in the Safety Action Plan as a partner, hopefully that conversation's being had at the planning level so that maybe they know-go it then and you're not talking about applying for implementation funds for that improvement.
Oh, thank you.
So, no problem.
Yeah, so that's interesting because we definitely have a lot of state and county roads that go through Cornwall, some of which could use some maybe traffic calming or speed reduction measures on them, you know, when they come through the town.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Interesting. Okay. All right, well, thank you, Frank.
Of course, thank you for the, for the time.
Yeah, you just grabbed that, yeah.
If there's any follow-up questions, happy to be available.
Yeah, we'll be in touch.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, was that, that was too bad. Yeah, yep. Yeah, I thought so. Okay, so, New York forward update. So this is the, the latest I have. You may have seen, I think in the local, was it last week? I think the mayor spoke about this at his meeting. I'm going to add a little more to this as it pertains to the, to the town, but you should have this little breakdown here, so just want to, so there's two state agencies that are managing our contracts. Uh, New York State Department of State has the majority of these. The Village has two separate contracts related to Donahue Farm and Donahue that trail down the river, those aren't ours, so we're not concerned with those. We've got this branding, marketing and wayfinding one, which it is a joint with the Village because obviously we're going to develop joint marketing, branding and signage, but the town's managing it from a contract administrator perspective, and we will be working with the Village on an overall plan. So we are going to have to work together with them as we, you know, you know, once we hire consultants to work on it. The Connector Trail is a joint between the town and village. Riverlight Park is solely Riverlight Park and the town, but what Department of State wants to combine both into one contract, each, each, um, each project's going to get its own set aside of money. So you can see the Connector Trail gets 1.1 million and Riverlight Park gets 783,000 that can be spent in the park. And obviously, as we go through this, if you actually take a look at the budgets and the strategic investment plan, those have been like adapted a little bit too. But some of those include, you know, other funding from, from state grants that we've already gotten, some of it is in kind, some of it is, you know, money from this, some of it is future anticipated money because we technically have, let's say like four or five years from the contract being signed. So just because you don't have the money now, doesn't mean you're not going to have gotten a grant for it in the future. And so like Steve, when we go through all these contracts and we have further, I'll get into that more, but, um, so these are the two Department of State contracts. We have the Small Project Fund, which is New York State Homes and Community Renewal. This is where we have businesses and property owners that are in the district, they can apply to get a grant that's reimbursable to do facade improvements, order a big piece of equipment, make a, you know, structural change within the building where they're running their business. This is a separate, this is through a different agency because they have experience running these small project funds. They've been doing this for decades. So that's where this one is. And this is a separate contract, and actually I have that contract, which I sent to Steve for review. It, it just came yesterday, so. So next steps for the town, Department of State wants us to put in place a memorandum of agreement between the town and village pertaining to how we're going to work together to implement the joint Department of State contracts. HCR has not asked for that. HCR has not asked for that, so unless they ask for it, um, but we really do have to kind of, I think, kind of keep them separate, cause it's really two separate things. One's gonna be, you know, a small project fund, and the other, which has very specific like requirements that have to be. And the other's gonna be very detailed projects. But we're currently waiting for the MOA to come over, the Village's attorney was working on drafting it. I, you know, I've been told we're gonna get it this week, we have, I don't think we've gotten it yet, but we're waiting for it. That's gonna stipulate how we're gonna work together, um, again, the town's managing the contracts. But because they're joint grants, the Villa, you know, they were trying to figure out what's the right way for the Village to get input. What's the right way for, you know, the town board and for the community to get input without making it such an overwhelming, unwieldy process. You know, to get through, so like, we're gonna try to lay this out in the MOA, which the board will obviously have to approve in the town and in the village. So, um, we should have that soon, um, the next step after that, town attorney. Is gonna have to draft RFPs for lead project consultants. If we have our engineering firm or anyone else that wants to bid on the future RFPs, if they're the ones that draft the RFPs, they can't bid on the. So we kind of, like similar to what we were just talking about with this, uh, Safe Streets thing. So the town attorney's gonna have to, and they have given us some draft RFPs too.
That's real.
Which I can, or will forward to you. For the HCR contract, we're gonna have to hire. The next thing there, once we sign the contract, is gonna be to hire a program administrator. Because they're not gonna let us just handle the three hundred thousand dollars, it's gotta be, the money goes in a bank account, we've hired a third-party administrator. Who's then gonna, you know, work to evaluate the applications, you know, based on a certain process, and then award the, the funds based on them. So that's a, that's like, like one of the, like, like the next things we have to do after we sign the contract, let's get an RFP out for that. They've also given us a list of regional administrators who have been doing this for decades in New York State, so that's very helpful. We kind of, we, and then they're gonna draft RFP too, so we can get that out, send it out, I think this could probably be the quickest. You know, New York Forward program to get into places, this one, I think. Don't quote me on that though. And then, there's also thirty percent MWBE requirements on this, and I was basically told. Don't ask for a waiver. So, look, I, I mean, I've experienced dealing with this in the, the non-municipal world. I know our engineering firm has experience doing this on a lot of the contracts, you know, like filling out the paperwork. So we're just gonna have to like go through it, they're not gonna let, you know, um, but there, there are plenty, I, I, I will say, as I've started looking through this. I mean, on like a number of these, there are a number of very highly qualified firms that are led by, you know, diverse teams of, you know, of professionals. So I think on some fronts, it's gonna be easy, others, you know, like the further you get out of the city, the less you, you know, you have certain types of, you know, firms. So it's just, you know, so we're just gonna, you know, plow right into this and we'll do what we have to do. Timeline, just, you know, just kind of like, here's how I see it going, but again, every time I've tried to put a timeline this, timeline, it's been off by months. So, because of like, it's, you know, like originally, oh, you're gonna have contracts by Labor Day, well, we got our first contract like yesterday. So, um, but I do think though, according to everything I've heard and just discussions I've had with our, you know, program officers, contract managers. We've now got to the point where the state's kind of caught up, and they're starting to be able to like push stuff out to us. So I think, like very quickly, I'm thinking over the next couple of months, we're gonna get these contracts back, we're gonna review them. They're gonna then have a month or two to review, but while that's happening, we can work on the RFPs, you know? And we'll get the RFPs out, and we'll go through the process, but I think very optimistically, I'm hoping to be. You know, at least awarding some RFPs for, you know, for the, for project leads, consultants by like the summer. I mean, I, I, I would hope we could at least get the Small Project Fund awarded by the summer, so we can start. Maybe not the others, but I mean, you know, we'll see, and again, just to make, uh, you know, further pressure, the state did say that, uh, the Village and the town. Um, are the first in the state to be embarking on this, so we're kind of their guinea pigs, and so we're gonna be the first to put an MOA in place. And they're kind of like, they wanna see how this is gonna work, so they're gonna be watching us. Because I don't know, maybe in the future, they're not gonna, uh, you know, award joint contracts like this, but they're willing to see what's, I'm just saying, they were like, yeah, you guys are it, you're first, there's no like. So, you know, for what that's worth, I guess we'll see how it goes through, you know? Questions? I mean, I have a lot of paper that I can, I, I have tons of, I have contracts, I have, I have lots of paper that I can. Push out to all of you, um, certainly when, um, you know, I'll push contracts out. I know I've been forwarding as much as I've been getting, I mean, but, um, if you think you're missing stuff, I can, you know, do a document dump. I mean, I, I just gave one to Steve the other day, that was like, I don't know, hundreds and hundreds of pages. So, happy to fill your inbox if you want it, or you can wait until we have, you know, stuff on meetings, it, it's up to you. Okay. So, next we have, now we're gonna get through a series of resolutions here. First, we have one for the T-Mobile modifications to the town cell tower. As you can see, we have this memo here from Gary, everything's good, so this is just a matter of, you know, this is gonna authorize the, the changes that are gonna be made. So, whereas the town of Cornwall has entered into a land lease with T-Mobile for the construction of a cell tower on a portion of town hall grounds. And whereas T-Mobile wishes to upgrade its cell tower facilities to remove and replace antennas and other supporting equipment on the existing cell tower. And whereas the plans for the proposed alteration of the cell tower antennas have been reviewed and approved by the town building department. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that the town board approves the proposed upgrades to the cell tower facility. Conditioned upon the submission of an appropriate application to the town of Cornwall Building Department. The issuance of the building permit by the town building inspector and payment of all applicable fees, can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michaelotti?
Yes.
Ms. George Housky?
Yes. Next up, I have a resolution for AT&T modifications to the town cell tower. Once again, same thing, we have, we have the request, we have the review by the building inspector, and we have, um. It's acceptable for issuance of a building permit, so we're just gonna read the resolution. Um, whereas the town of Cornwall has entered into a land lease with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. In parentheses, AT&T, for the construction of a cell tower on a portion of town hall grounds. Whereas AT&T is seeking to perform equipment upgrades to its existing telecommunications facilities by performing construction listed on the plans. Annexed here too, and made part of this resolution. And whereas the plans for the proposed upgrades of the telecommunications facilities have been reviewed and approved by the town building department. Now therefore be resolved, that the town board does hereby approve the proposed upgrades to the said telecommunications facilities. Conditioned upon the submission of an appropriate application to the town of Cornwall Building Department, the issuance of a building. Permit by the town building inspector and payment of all applicable fees, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michaelotti?
Yes.
Ms. George Housky?
Yes. Okay, next up, this is the authorization for, to put the Taylor Road Culver project out to bid on November twenty-sixth. Whereas the town's consulting engineers have requested that the town board authorize going to bid for the Taylor Road Culver replacement project. And whereas the town's consulting engineers have prepared documents and specifications which will be available for review. On November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, by all interested bidders at the town clerk's office. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that the town board hereby authorizes the solicitation of bids for the Taylor Road Culver replacement project. Two, that the town board hereby directs the town clerk to publish such advertisement of bids in the town's official newspaper no later than December sixth, twenty twenty-four. And post such advertisement on the town's website and on the town clerk's bulletin board. And three, that the bids will be publicly opened and read aloud on January ninth, twenty twenty-five. Can I get a motion to put the, the bids out?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michaelotti?
Yes.
Mr. George Housky?
Yes, okay, so now, alright, this is the, um, the golf course. So, as the board knows, we've taken down over the past few years, it was a one point, one point something million. And, you know, in the escrow account, and as you're aware, as they complete certain work. And it's verified by the engineering firm engineer and their, and their site inspector. We then, this then ties back to a spreadsheet that reduces the amount that is allowed to be, you know, come off of that, you know, escrow account. And so, we did one recently, which was a pretty sizable chunk, because they had done a, you know, decent amount of work on the golf course. Again, you've, you know, they've been doing a lot of work on the golf course, and so they're asking for an additional reduction. As I think many of you are aware, um, the residents, um, you know, Jim and his wife, they, they, uh, they're here tonight. They live on the other side, just kind of south of where the golf course ends up, and, you know, over the years. There's been issues with, you know, uh, stormwater not being properly either kept on the top of the course or not. I guess going where it needs to go and, you know, causing issues, et cetera. And so one of the things, when we had a meeting with, you know, their engineers, our engineers, you know, Jim and his wife. And others, uh, uh, the building inspector, I think was on that call too, I think Tim might have been too. It was determined that the best way would be to raise the elevations and sort of keep the water on this part of the course, and not like, uh, not allowed to come down here. Where it was overwhelming the, you know, whatever, I guess, you know, stormwater control measures they had, to get my engineer, so. And so, the golf course is saying that they've done that work. And in order to a hundred percent verify that work plus the other work, cause they didn't just work on that over the past two months, it was a whole bunch of other things they did. So there's gonna be surveys that will, town will have in its possession in early December. They're saying they've done it, we've let, uh, uh, left a little less than a hundred thousand dollars in the, in the escrow account. To resolve any additional work that would have to happen on the golf course. And so, you know, the residents wanna know that, you know, will we won, you know, uh. Make sure that this is done, and we'll verify this when we get these, uh, the surveys in December, which I'm told we're gonna have in, you know, early to mid. December from the town engineer tonight. If that's not done, and the surveys say that, then very clearly, we'll be going back to them. Um, when, we won't, I, I doubt the board would then come back if they haven't done this, you know, and further reduce. But there's also the issue too, they've still gotta do ASBILTS of the whole course when they're done, in order for them to be able to, you know, to fully open and play on the course. And so, uh, you know, again, if they don't do the work, I don't foresee this board allowing them to proceed with fully opening, I, I would imagine. And so that's, I mean, that's basically your assurance, that you wanna make sure that before we allow them to, you know, go on their merry way, take the rest of their money out. That we're not gonna be, that, that, the town and the residents aren't gonna be left holding the bag down the road with no recourse, basically, is, 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 is what I'm gathering. And so, I mean, look, I, I can tell you, I mean, from myself, I, I would, I would certainly hope the rest, you know, of the board members would feel the same way. That we're not gonna like, if they haven't done those things that we agreed to would reduce those stormwater issues. Then, you know, we're not gonna again, close it out, we're not gonna let them go on their merry way, we're not gonna, you know. Uh, approve the ASBILTS and, you know, let them open the course. So I think that, I mean, you certainly have my assurance, I, I, I would hope that the rest of the board would feel the same way on that. I, I don't know if the rest of the board wants to say anything to that effect, but.
I don't know, one of the issues is that they talked about that brim, was that a creekside that was elevated, they thought that was elevated from the past. Golf course owner, and I know our engineer has reviewed that, saw that there was an issue there, and that he's gonna make sure that's, that's connected. So that won't take the stormwater and directly put it in your back, we are, like, it has happened a lot, storm, unfortunately, back in, when was that, July night? You know, I mean, that was a freak storm, but even something like with five, four to five inches of rain. That's to take that water, keep it out of, out of under course in the stormwater retention ponds. Or it's gonna evenly distribute it into the creek at, at a reasonable amount, you know, I mean, unless you get like a major hurricane. You know, if unfortunate, it's unfortunate, but, um, but if they're all gonna make corrections, I mean, like, I don't know, that. Golf course open without those proper, uh, corrections being made, to ensure that they won't be like rapid. Damage done to your property from like what happened in the past.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, so again, do you, do you have any further questions? I mean, I know that you've reviewed the proposed changes, you just wanna make sure that, that they've happened or are gonna happen, and that's.
I just haven't gotten any information as to what actually happened and how it was changed. We talked about it back in August, and then I haven't seen any updates since then.
Yeah, I mean, you know, they, they've been doing the work, they said they've done it, but we can't, you know, again, I couldn't tell you by looking at where they had the equipment on the course. Whether or not they, you know, ra, you know, raised it to the, the height they said they were gonna raise it to, or lowered it, or whatever. And I, I think we're only gonna know when we get the, you know, when we get the survey, but like I said, when we get, you know, familiar today, as soon as we have the survey. You know, please come back on, let's go over it, you know, um, send me an email the first week of December. And, you know, copy the board if you want, it's the same thread you have, and we'll get back on with the town engineer. And, you know, uh, after he's had a chance to review it, and we'll go over it, and if it's not done, it's gonna get done.
Okay. Um, Mr. McGarvey, sir, do you have a chance?
Yes, sorry.
Let me just ask a question, um, you know, why, why would we grant this reduction, um, without that survey?
That was my question.
The funds that were deposited on the security that they have. Were for certain designated work and improvements to be made on the golf course. We have a letter from their engineer, Ross Winglovitz, saying that those, uh, the, for the funds that they're seeing reduction for. That work was done, you have a letter from M A G confirming that that work was done, and they agree with, with Winglovitz. You're holding ninety-five thousand dollars in additional funds, which can be used in the event that. ASBILTS don't come back correctly, but once the work is done, I won't say you have to release it, you could hold on to it. But you're not gonna be able to draw on it for something other than the work that it was on deposit for, and the work that it was on deposit for. At least the portion looking for release from has been done. So if the board wanted, you could delay it, you could put it off, but other than that ninety-five thousand dollars. You really don't have funds that you're gonna be able to draw, uh, in the event the ASBILTS don't come back as they're supposed to.
Yeah, and so, and, you know, what I would say is that. The way the.
I'd keep your clarification, Steve.
The way the calculation works too, and if you wanna ask, you know, and I, I know I've, I've said to go talk to the town engineer. But there's a very specific, like, you know, in order to restore this, this is so much sod and so much. Soil and manpower and construction and blah, 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 and this, it all ties back to a formula, which is how they calculated this. And so that's how they know how much to release is, because they go through and they see what was done, and then when they say it was done, then it, then. Like the Excel spreadsheet like kicks out how much the reduction is, so it's all very, so when they put this together, it was very detailed. Like how many trees, sod, clearing and grading, blah, blah, blah. And so when they get to this number, it's based on this formula tied back to the spreadsheet that the engineering firm has, so.
And they've confirmed that that work has been done, so, I mean, other than, you know, holding it just to, I won't say punish. But to, um, you know, to not accommodate the developer, there's, there's really no reason not to release it. You're not gonna be able to use it for, for other purposes.
Okay, Steve, I totally understand what you're, what you're saying, I was, I was just, I did speak with, uh, the engineer. And yes, he did give me the information, I was just, when I was hearing about the survey, that's what was. Really the reason I asked the question, so.
Yeah, I mean, look.
Thanks for the clarification.
Unfortunately, the only way to a hundred percent know what was done to like, within like inches of what they said they were gonna do. Is to get an ASBILT, you know, is to get surveys all along, and then to get a final ASBILT at the end. And if, I mean, look, if there's stuff off on that ASBILT at the end, I mean, we have the right to go back to them and say, well, look, you gotta fix this, you know?
And you can require additional security to be deposited.
Yeah.
And you can't, you can say you can't open it, I mean, there are remedies available to the town.
Make it through clarification.
Yeah, so if the board's okay with this, I'm gonna call the resolution then. Whereas in, uh, twenty twenty-one, the Hudson Valley Golf Foundation posted performance security for clearing and grading work at the Storm King Golf Club. Eighteen Ridge Road, Cornwall, New York, one-two-five-one-eight, in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty cents. By letter of credit. And whereas in, uh, twenty twenty-two, the Hudson Valley Golf Foundation requested, and the town board granted. A reduction in the performance security to the amount of five hundred and three thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. Based on a completion of the portion. Based on a completion of the portion of work at the property. And whereas in September twenty twenty-four, the Hudson Valley Golf Foundation requested and the board. Granted a reduction in the performance security to the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Based upon the completion of a portion of the work at the property. And whereas the current owners have requested a further reduction in the performance security to the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars. Based upon a completion of a portion of the work at the property and whereas. The town's engineering consultants have reviewed the request for a reduction on the performance security and have rendered a report recommending that the town board. Approve the request of reduction and accept the middle of a reduced performance security. Now therefore it be resolved as follows. That the town board hereby grants the request to reduce the required performance security to the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars. That the reduced performance security shall be posted by letter of credit in form acceptable to the town attorney, can I get a motion to approve?
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes, yes, Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so next up we have, and the, is the dark room S U P renewal. So Gary did review, um, I know last week we never formally, but Gary ended up, uh, reviewing it. We have a letter here, he says there's no complaints with regard to the dark room and, you know, his office has no objection to renewing the S U P.
It's kinda a lengthy resolution, you wanna waive the reading and then just do the one, two, three, four?
Yeah, we can do that. Alright, can I get a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Yes. Now therefore it is hereby resolved as follows. That the renewal of the special use permit at issue constitutes a type two action under C gra. That the town board grants a one-year renewal of the special use permit for a disco tag from January eighth, twenty twenty-five to January eighth, twenty twenty-six. That the conditions currently affect imposed upon issuance of the special use permit shall remain in effect and apply equally to this grant of renewal. Of the special use permit. That any applications for renewals of the special use permit at issue must be submitted. By the applicant and received by the town prior to midnight on the expiration date of the existing special use permit. Or the special use permit shall lapse and renewal will not be available, can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. George Haskins?
Yes. Alright, um, we've got the C S E A M O A, um. So, you know, the, uh. We've all had a, you know, I think this was a pretty productive, uh, negotiating. With the C S E A, I think we are, you know, correcting some long time issues with. You know, pay disparity here that we've had, um, I think we're keeping. Track with what the county's done, some other municipalities around Orange County, um. You know, this is certainly gonna help address, you know, some of the inflationary issues that we've had. Um, you know, we're looking to, I think, the, you know, certainly the public has had a chance to, to take a look at this. Um, you know, roughly over the, you know, the life of the contract, roughly nineteen percent, um, you know, increases to our workers. Um, you know, we've already adopted the budget and the budget reflects this contract being. You know, finalized and put into place, so. If there's any questions that the board has before we take a vote on this, if there's anything the board members would like to add, please. Please let me know, uh, otherwise I'm gonna call the resolution. Okay, um. Resolve that the town board from the town of Cornwall hereby ratifies and accepts the memorandum of agreement. Between the town of Cornwall and Civil Service Employees Association, Inc., A F S C M E, Local Unit, Orange County, Local eight thirty-six. For a successor collective bargaining agreement with a term of January first, twenty twenty-five through and including January thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, which is attached here too. Once the M O A has been approved by members of the union and based on such approval, the town board shall authorize the town supervisor to execute a collective bargaining agreement. Consistent with the terms of the M O A, can I get a motion to approve?
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. George Haskins?
Yes. Next up we have, this is the USDA E W P extension request, as you recall. The current, the town's current participation, um, would end on January ninth, twenty twenty-five unless we extend this by. Seven hundred and twenty-one days, which we have no intention of taking that entire time, but. You know, this is the maximum amount, so we're gonna take the maximum amount allowed, um. So whereas the town of Cornwall is participating in emergency watershed protection program in order to purchase certain real properties in the town. Which are located in an impaired watershed and are at risk from imminent threat of flooding. And whereas the current program calls for the town's participation in the E W P program to be completed by January ninth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas the town requires an extension of time in order to complete its proceedings under the E W P program. Whereas extensions of time under the E W P program are available through the United State, uh, State's Department of Agriculture. Uh, and the Natural Resources Conservation Service upon written request. Now therefore it be resolved that the town board hereby authorizes the town supervisor to submit written requests. For a seven hundred and twenty-one day extension of time to address buyout and implementation of recovery measures. As per the attached draft letters and to execute each and such other. And further documents as may be necessary to secure the said extension of time, can I get a motion to approve?
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Next up we have a workers' compensation claim. Buyback here, and so. Basically by buying back the claim, we can save. Four thousand, one hundred and two dollars over three years, this has been recommended by the safety group, which handles our workers' comp. Insurance that we do this, um, you know, I've spoken to them, I've spoken to. To Pam and to Jen who helped administer this, and so the recommendation would be that we authorize this, um. You know, buying back the, the claim for, uh, one thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents, so. If the board has any, um, questions, concerns, I would just take a voice vote to authorize the town to. Buy back the claim for one thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. I get a motion to approve, sorry.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. George Haskins?
Yes. Next up we have police department purchase of cameras, so this would be through that tech grant and this would be. At a cost of five thousand, eight hundred dollars and this would be to purchase, uh, cameras, you can see here where they would be going throughout the. You know, buildings and grounds, facilities, the town hall park, the music pavilion, farmer's market, et cetera. Um, if I could get a motion to approve the purchase and installation of cameras for five thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Showed.
Second.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, um, alright, so next up we have a resolution for the festival of Hanukkah for the menorah. As you know, this is a long time standing tradition that we've had, um, this is a Shabbat of Eastern Orange County. Um, every year they, they come and they put up the, the menorah and we have a ceremony and then we go back to Munger Cottage afterwards, it's really a very nice ceremony and then gathering. Um, and so. Uh, whereas the, the town board of the town of Cornwall has received a request from Rabbi, uh, Samuel, uh, Shuber. Uh, Shriverianski of Shabbat of Eastern Orange County to place a six foot to eight foot menorah. On town hall grounds for the festival of Hanukkah and to host a lighting ceremony on Thursday, December twenty-sixth. Twenty twenty-four at seven P M with service of food and drink indoors at Munger Cottage following the lighting. Whereas the town board has considered the request from Rabbi, uh, Shriverianski and now therefore it be resolved as follows. That the town board hereby grants the request from Rabbi Sh- uh, Shriverianski of the Shabbat of Eastern Orange County. To place a six to eight foot menorah on town hall grounds, the specific location to be approved by the town supervisor or the superintendent of buildings and grounds. For a period of time between December twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four and January third, twenty twenty-five. Subject to the following, a statement of the day the display will be erected and the day it will be removed and an executed hold harmless agreement waiver. Proof that Shabbat of Eastern Orange County has liability insurance covering its activities and erecting the proposed display. And naming the town of Cornwall as an additional insured, can I get a motion to approve?
Showed.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. George Haskins?
Yes. This is a, um, apologize, last minute addition, um. As you know, we were awarded the, uh, Jackson Avenue culvert replacement through D O T's Bridge New York program. Um, the engineering firm needs us to, um. Essentially amend the authorization to add an additional, uh, roughly ten thousand dollars worth of work. That is going to be needed in order to pull off the, the administration, design, et cetera, additional work of this program. Um, it would be according to their standard, uh, municipal fee schedule. But they needed to do this in order for us to be able to proceed with, you know, working on the, the culvert. So if I could get a motion to amend the, the authorization for the Bridge New York Administration, Jackson Avenue Culvert replacement. Um, by adding an estimated, uh, additional, how should I do this, Steve, just ten thousand dollars, they're saying estimated or?
Well, what they wanna do is, is add the, uh, additional scope of work at an estimated cost of ten thousand dollars. So you could just say the estimated, um, the scope and add the additional scope of work as per. The memo submitted by M A G, you get an estimated cost of ten thousand dollars.
Okay, so, if I could make a motion to amend the, um. The original authorization, uh, authorization to add the additional scope of work and, uh, services per the memo provided by. M H E Engineering with an estimated cost of ten thousand dollars, I get a motion to approve?
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. George Haskins?
Yes. Okay, so next up, you all, you may recall earlier in the year that we, we had the Orange County Tourism Grant, we applied, we got the money. We said we were gonna sub-grant it out, we came up with a form. We sent the form out to, to the chamber, to Cornwall Events, to the Arts Alliance, still waiting on their application, I do expect them to be. To be sending something in, but it's been sent out, um, it's on the website, I believe, too, um. But basically all the groups that, that hold events that, you know, advertise, because this money has to be spent on advertising per the county's requirements of the ground. And so, we have. There's roughly, I think it's like four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents is what the county gave us, um. And so, we have three from the chamber and now these are really gonna be for prior events to this point, plus we have, we're gonna be getting one from. The Arts Alliance, I believe, is, is gonna be submitting for the event that they have coming up in Munger, which is next Saturday, the Holiday Market, um. And we have the Cornwall Events Committee. Which is submitting for reimbursement of roughly, um, you can kinda see where this is like broken down here, um. And so this is gonna be for, um, advertising on the paper, it's gonna be for flyers, it's gonna be for, um. You know, uh, uh, they wanna create a website, um, uh, with the remaining money for their advertising needs, but basically. You know, they're asking for a thousand bucks, but this is a reimbursement, so. If, you know, we approve them for a thousand dollars, they have to come to us with their, with, with their receipts for what they've spent and then we reimburse it. So that's, that's how this would work, so I am gonna, yeah, that's for everybody, yes, um. But I would ask that we, that we approve the amounts. And then, they know that they have to bring all of the receipts, but, you know, we approve the amounts up to.
Exactly, and it's up to, you know, if they don't have the receipts, then they don't get the money, but if they do, they get it.
Yeah, exactly. And so, the chamber has submitted, they have submitted for the, we have the Fall Festival. Um, they're asking for a thousand bucks to be reimbursed for signage, online advertising, social media, flyers, et cetera. So they would have to come and bring us all of the, the, you know, the, the receipts. They're also asking for funds for the art walks, spectacular, et cetera, another thousand dollars for that, um. And then they're also asking for another five hundred dollars for the annual car show. For the, for the same stuff, so, um. I basically have twenty-five hundred dollars from the chamber over three events, a thousand dollars from the Cornwall Events Committee. So that puts us at, what, thirty-five hundred dollars, you know, leaving roughly fifteen, fourteen hundred, uh, ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. For the Arts Alliance or anyone else that's gonna submit, but at this point we're, so I guess the question is, I think certainly we wanna leave, I would say. Up to a thousand for the Arts Alliance, I mean, they did do the art walk, walks earlier this year, and actually there was a one.
Is there a timeline for the submission of our application?
I mean. This went out, we asked them to fill it out, they, they got it back now, but, I mean, at this point, the. The town hasn't had any events, we haven't spent it and we said we were gonna re-grant it, so.
I don't know, there's a date that the county would demand the money back, once they, they grant you the money, you have to spend it.
Within the fiscal.
I'm sure there comes a point.
Within the fiscal year.
That's gotta be within the fiscal year?
Yeah.
Well, then that's your timeline.
You know, I mean, look, next year.
They're not getting their application, they're not gonna get the money.
Yeah, I mean, now that we know that we're gonna apply for this next year, we can.
We've got, we've got everybody's application except for a lot of people.
Yeah, I mean, look, I think that's just partially, I sent it to them a bunch of times, but. You know, they've been doing work all along, I don't think that we wanna deny them if they can get us stuff done, but, yeah.
Just, you know, hey, this is a, there's a deadline on application, I'm trying to.
Yeah. So, I mean, I guess what I would ask tonight is that the board approves the ones for the chamber and for the Cornwall Events Committee. And maybe we even, you know, go ahead, unless we think we're gonna get, you know, additional in from other groups, but we've put. This has been out here now for like six months.
Aside from Art Alliance, is there any other groups?
Well, and they would have had to have had events that were advertised and, and, and they have, because this has to be used for, you know, reimbursement of advertising and marketing. So unless, I mean, Virginia, are there other groups that have had, that have done things, I mean, the only other one I can think of would be the Fourth of July Committee, but they haven't.
No, that's different.
Um, I'm trying to think, no, it was the Arts Alliance is the only one I can think of.
That's it.
I mean, certainly naturally, look, we know we're gonna, I, I imagine this is what we're gonna do with this each year, so.
I believe you are preparing the list, um, because I spoke to them, uh, yeah.
Yeah, it's not mine, just, just, just remind me, that's a timeline, that's all, that's all.
Okay, so I, I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree with, um, I do agree, agree with Councilman, um, McCarty because this, you know, I know we talked about the application. Um, I didn't realize there was like a closing date, this is just, you know, this was not in the work session, so. That's why I'm asking the questions, um, so the way that this works is that. They apply after they do their events, or shouldn't, because I know the Cornwall, um, Events Committee, they're actually applying for something. You know, because they're going to be holding events, where the chamber has already done these things, which I do believe the car show. Um, they, they, they sponsor this and they actually donate the proceeds to, um, I believe it was the, um, was it the Police Department?
Yeah, Moose and Moose.
First responders, first responders.
First responders, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, what, you know, what I would say is that, you know, they've actually had this for. I know you have the date on here, but there was a little bit of a, my understanding is that. These were completed, but they never made it from the person that completed them to the person that was giving them to. So, just, you know, but these are just these things where, you know, they. They told me they were gonna be doing this, I asked them, hey, can you please submit this because I wanna get this wrapped up. Before the end of the year and this is when they chose to submit it, but if we don't give it to the chamber, then. The town hasn't held events, doesn't have any expenses, we would just basically be giving the money back. We're not spending it, so I think I would rather, you know, reimburse, you know, these organizations that are out of pocket so they can use that money elsewhere.
Yeah, I don't think there's a problem.
Could we up the amount, um, for the Arts Alliance to maybe fifteen hundred dollars? Because they're a new organization, they've been doing a lot of work of. And, and I know the chamber, they've already done. And and I know the Chamber, they've already done the car show, which was, you know, five hundred dollars, I mean. Have they submitted any receipts at at all on these things?
You approve it and then they submit the receipts, they need to submit the receipts to get the money.
Yeah, no, nobody has given me, I I know they have it all, they like, they have it all in a binder, they have it all, they're gonna have to give it to Pam before.
This, we have this written record.
Yes. Yeah, this is banners, this is printing, programs, digital. Like news, full page newspaper ads, like all that kind of stuff.
Just for everybody's information, I do sit on the Art Alliances meeting every month, so. Um, all the expenses are legit and they do have the receipts.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they have to submit a request.
Yes, yes, I did speak to them.
I know they're currently, they're currently completing it, I know that, so I know they are, I did send it to them again, because when I. I didn't have it and I wanted to take care of this, so I did send them again, I said, hey, please send this to us, because we wanna.
And they're working on it, yes.
Yeah, I live in Virginia, I don't have an issue with that, I mean, you know, um, obviously we can only.
We have fourteen ninety nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can authorize fourteen ninety nine, so, alright, so if I can get a motion to approve, um. One thousand dollars for the Cornwall Events Committee. That would be for the um November thirtieth event. Um, can I get a motion to approve a thousand dollars for the Cornwall Chamber of Commerce? That would be for the for the um, the art walks, spectacular, art and business specials, advertising. Also, the Fall Festival, a thousand dollars for that. Um, five hundred dollars for the annual car show, and then one thousand four hundred ninety nine dollars and ninety nine cents. For the Arts Alliance, next year, Arts Alliance will get that up to fifteen hundred.
But I don't see how you can approve it for the Arts Alliance unless they submit a request.
Well, up.
They really can't do it.
Upon the submittal of, can I do it that way?
Upon the submittal of a request, well, why don't they just submit it, then you approve it in December, is that not a problem?
Yeah, you want me to do it? Alright, so.
Or we just wait for three of them together?
Let's use the ones we have, yeah.
Let them come in.
Okay, so then we'll, alright, so then we'll do, we'll hold off the Arts Alliance until December.
Give me a second, I just wanna see the, um, where's the, um, special events, um, raised.
Do you have the one that was typed?
It's right here.
The first one.
Oh, yes, hang on, just give me two seconds.
Um, Ju- Joshua, the booking.
Yeah.
Aren't like the the openings, like the Arts Alliance, when they do like openings for artists? Like say at Leo's, would that count, because they are promoting the either social media as well?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, so for instance, if they're if they're advertising, if they're paying for like print, digital, whatever. Advertising for any of their calendar of events, I don't know why, you know, why they couldn't submit for that.
Alright.
It's just the key, like the key is the county basically wants us to use the money to promote things that are happening, so it can generate, you know. Economic development opportunities, you know, um. Alright, so if I if I could get a motion to approve the funding for the Chamber of Commerce and the Cornwall Events Committee.
So, second.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelmann Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. McCarrotsey?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, so this is just something from, um, Phyllis, that. Yeah, Phyllis and Laura, um, so this this pertains to like rec basketball, this is just more of like an update, um, you know. So basically, as you know, we've been running this program for, what, seventy years now? The uh, the basketball down in the pit, you know, and, uh, you know, in C O H, and, um. Basically, this year, the school district decided to start their own program, and so, you know, just not getting it. This is essentially their sort of summary, because what we're gonna have to do here is, we are gonna have to. We're not gonna be able to do the the younger kids, we're really only, um. It looks like the school district's program has kind of, you know, eaten into the town's program a little bit, um. And so we're really only gonna be able to do the sixth, seventh, and and eighth graders, we'll have enough to have teams there, but because of the. The timing of all of this and sort of just how it all came about, we're gonna basically have to scale back our program. Now, we're hopeful that next year, that we'll be able to kind of get the lower grades back on track, but this was kind of like sprung on us, like a few weeks before we were about to like announce our own. Program, and so we had to like adapt pretty quickly here, so we are gonna be doing sixth, seventh, and eighth, but. This is sort of, you know, I just wanted to let you know, because normally it is, I think, normally it's like. First grade through eighth grade, and we're in, you know, a a bunch of different schools, and it looks like we are gonna be. Because those are also the timing of the school district, we are gonna be having to. Um, move the sixth, seventh, eighth over to Nema, we're gonna be in a gymnasium, so we were able to get in there. Um, which I will say are really awesome, if you haven't been in those facilities recently, like the bas-. Like, you know, the basketball courts and the gymnasium, like, like those are among some of the best kept. You know, buildings, and so we're gonna be over there, because it's got the full size courts, um, so we've been, you know, talking to Nema about that, but we are gonna be over there. On Friday nights for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
Were they given any reason? Why they were discontinuing it?
Well, we don't, um, we don't have enough, so normally, like, we normally have enough to have four or five teams in each division. With the younger kids, we don't even have enough in some cases to have, you know, two full teams where people can play each other, but we do have enough to be able to to do the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And so, you know, it appears as though some of the other kids that would have played in our league went to the other, you know, which is more like. Look, the school district's gonna be more instructional based, they wanna to kind of start a feeder system to their, you know, varsity program. But unfortunately, there just wasn't enough, like, I think. You know, because there wasn't enough, like, I guess, like, pre-communication with the town on this, unfortunately, we kind of like. And maybe next year, we can have like a better, but it kind of just all got launched, like.
What's the schools doing, this basically, what they do with the football program, why it's so good? It's because they have like mighty, mighty Stevens. And the business boards are starting to see that, so schools go, hey, we want to have basketball, so they're starting like. Young kids and going up and up.
Yeah, I I I just think that the that just from the rec department's perspective, we would have liked a little, you know, like heads up that this was gonna happen, then like.
I have got a question about Nema cost.
Yeah.
Costs, who, I will say that cost, who's who's ever offered that cost?
So we, so when we're in the school buildings, it's actually gonna be the the same cost that we're paying the schools for janitors, so there's really no.
No personal fees?
There's no, um, the roughly the same forty fifty an hour that we would be paying the school district to use. The schools paying the janitors is roughly the same cost that we're paying Nema. So.
So no personal fees?
Yeah, not, yeah, but I mean, part of the problem too is. The 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 time slots that they took up for the schools program would have. Put us where we would have had to have started our program much later than we normally started it, so if we wanted to keep it at the same time, and parents were very. Parents didn't want their kids starting a, you know, this league at like eight, nine o'clock at night, they wanted it to be the same time, and so Nema was really the only. Option to kind of keep it, so. So anyway, they, you know, they just wanted to let you know that this is what was happening, because, you know, we are, like, we're not gonna have pit baskets, this is the first time in seventy years we're not having pit basketball. We're gonna be at, you know, at Nema now with the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, um.
Josh?
Yes.
Rec Department liaison could have the other meeting possible, with you and Jason and Laura and.
No, we we already had this.
Oh, you did?
Well, we we.
We requested, I see.
Yeah, we've requested, we had, we met, um, and then we put ours out, and this is just sort of how it landed, I mean, we think that. That next year, with more time, you know, that we'll be able to kind of, you know, get it all out, because once we found out that the school district was doing it. We then had to like, you know, figure out, okay, so if they're doing it, well then, we gotta like, you know, decide where all of our kids are gonna go, and it kind of just led to this like scramble. Um, but I'm thankful we were able to get sixth, seventh, and eighth graders over to Nema, and we'll kind of, you know, look to like. You know, to fix this next year, I know, you know, Mike Anderson, he's involved in this as well, we're kind of working on this, um, Phyllis and Laura, so. That's really all I have on that, um, are there any town, oh, are there any town board member liaison reports?
Yeah.
Do you wanna, so, you have anything, Karen?
Um, so the town building department took in twenty eight permits, did sixty two onsite inspections. And maintains thirty open planning board projects, there's no planning board meeting in December, um, because no one asked for one. And then the last, this month's planning board meeting, there was only one item on the agenda, so things are sort of winding down.
That's good, they've had a busy year.
They have a very busy year. They earned the short meeting and the cancel.
Roksha?
Oh, sure, I have one, actually, um, as everybody more or less knows about the, um, uh, snowflakes. Uh, the decorations that are gonna be coming to town, um, soon, but the, just prepared something, to clarify a few things. The Main Street Advisory Committee started the snowflake light pole project in twenty twenty three by designating poles. For the electricity and banners, after the poles were approved by Central Hudson, R P C Electric. Um, added the electric boxes on each pole, once the electric, um, portion was completed. Us, the town board, approved the funds, and the Main Street, um, Advisory Committee chose the snowflakes during the meeting that they held. The village lights were worked on by Lori Beth and the Village Board as well, the lights will be installed on November twenty seventh. And hopefully will be lit on November twenty ninth, and with a small event to celebrate, um. The town and village lights, we're just gonna thank you to the board, all of us, all of you. And Main Street Advisory Committee for bringing the lights to, uh, on Main Street, and thanks to Tom, of course, Deshrenz, our Superintendent of Highways. For his, um, and the effortless, uh, hard work on this project. The three lights and the star were put on Monday, November eighteen, this is traffic light, by the way. Uh, next array again, the R P C Electric for their hard work, and Tom as well, again, for organizing all this. Um, the star of the tree was donation to town from the Highlands Engine Company. And the tree light lighting is December eighth from five to six P M, there will be a special guest lighting the tree. And performances by the Hotsey Tatsies and Cornwall Middle School Band. And before the tree is lit, love from heaven also will be selling luminaries for under the tree, and this was the one for both.
Great. Councilmember McCarty?
Uh, Camo, uh, see the calls, uh, shore plant, just put on meetings that happens every month. Um, what's new here on the collection system is that deceptive tank inspection, there are twenty five, uh, Stone Trail Road. And then there's a bunch of markouts for Central Hudson, uh, over on Water Avenue, Banner Avenue, whatever, and all all sorts of, like, ordered by four. And then the markup for all the water department's work that they've been doing on, uh, Sdane, Broadway. And also, uh, Sdane Smith, oh, really would have paved, I guess, a lot of markouts for water, for the sewer. Flow rate is, uh, point four, one point five is the, you know, I mean, uh, B O D is three point three, it's the, it's way under. And T S S, two, Ben's house is nine, it's steady, so, it's it's way below the rates, which is good. And then, uh, third cliff, the new thing on the maintenance is that they replaced all the electrical breakers at the wastewater treatment plant at, at our third cliff. And they also cleaned up the two main lines leading into the wastewater plant, the flow maintenance will really low, it's, uh, point zero three one. And it's extremely low, and then B O D is on two, that's very low also, way under the rate. And T S S is at, it's four, and I'm sorry, per minute thirty, it sounds, it's way below me, so it's a money figure, and. Probably has to do a lot because we have drought, but, uh, it's gonna come, but it's gonna come for a rapid end in a couple days. Anyway, highway department assisted sanitation, holiday pickups, metal pickups, repaired catch basins, uh, Sdane, Jacob, Smith, and Silkox. Mill, uh, paint, Sdane, Jacob, Smith, and Silkox, that's all completed, I'm telling you, outstanding. Uh, blacktop, uh, patch at, uh, miserable road, Oak Drive, Mine Hill, Jacob, Taylor Road. And also Jackson, I nearly forget that one, so that, uh, hometown hill, banners worn, stored, sanitation, um. Really nothing here, except that they cut sixty six point eight seven tons, that cost the town seven thousand five hundred sixty five dollars. And those are grounds, uh, service to heaters in the town buildings, getting the furniture and the fall cleanup on the ground was pretty good. And that's it.
Great, uh, Councilmember Scott?
Um, the only things I wanna report is the senior advisory committee, we postponed our meeting till next Monday. Uh, at one P M, uh, our sign up for the holiday, um, concert at West Point. Is underway, um, we added something a little different, uh, we're actually going to have lunch. Prior to, um, the concert, um, with, uh, in, uh, Highland Falls with, uh, Delicia's. Uh, the fee is twenty dollars, that includes, um, the bus tip and, um, lunch. And, uh, if members of the community want to sign up, uh, the rec department has the forms. And, um, they are due by December fourth, so, uh, very exciting, uh, for the seniors, I know they're looking forward to the concert. Um, thank you Supervisor Wojciechowski for actually forwarding, um, useful information about the, um. The first of heights, um, water district, um, that, um, John Fair has actually, um, been. Looking to complete our inventory because of the, uh, New York State regulations to have it examined for, uh, lead. Um, as a follow up, um, we're, there are no, uh, the lead connections to. The homeowners' prop- properties are not present, so thank you John Fair and Camo for doing that. Um, the other things, thank you to, uh, Mike Trainer, who actually sent a a follow up, uh, email to just inform. The town, so, um, that's all I have to report, and thank you.
Okay, great, so just, I guess, two things real quick, I'll make these really. These really quick, um, so look, in terms of, uh, uh, EMS services, again. Hundred percent calls covered, um, response times in Cornwall, five minutes and thirty four seconds, Cornwall and Hudson, six minutes and twenty two seconds. Uh, again, I still say, as I look across the county and I see what other municipalities are having to do, I mean, we could really be paying like. Like, this would be just totally exploding our budget if we weren't so lucky to have worked this out with such a fine organization, so very. Very glad that we were able to to do this, um. We are though going, yeah, as you know, we did complete the budget, um, but the next thing for us to do is, we do have to finalize, um. The the contract with them, you know, we've spoken about this, but this will have, this will have to be either on a, you know, December or January, uh. Agenda finalized, because our contract that we currently have in place does expire, I believe it's like.
No, it doesn't expire till June.
Yeah, no, no, I know, but we wanna, you know, get into it now, so.
Wow, I I hear you, Josh, as far as that goes.
Yeah.
However you want.
Yeah.
It doesn't run out till June.
Yeah, no, I was, I was just gonna say, it does go until, you know, the end of June, um, but, uh. So, we have that, um, and then with the police department, um, you know, again, um. You know, we're continuing to negotiate the P V A contract, um. You know, can't say really anything about that, but, you know, we're doing our best, making progress here, going back and forth, everything's, you know. Cordial, professional, um, you know, I expect at a certain point in time, we'll be able to come back to the board. To talk further about where we're gonna land, um, but, you know, right now, um, you know, we're still kind of in a back and forth mode, so. That's where we are with that, um, on the Hasbrook area drainage project, I do have something to. So on Monday, December second, and it's actually really good that we don't have a planning board meeting that night, because we can either be in here or Munger Cottage, but. We are gonna be having a, we're gonna be sending out letters to all the people that we still need easements from, as well as residents that live in that area. Because we wanna just inform them kind of like of the construction schedule and like anticipated start date. So we're gonna be sending letters out to folks that live on Union, Clinton, Hasward, Robert Road, Sheldon, there's some Main Street addresses, et cetera. Uh, Monday, December second, seven P M, it's either gonna be in here or at Munger, depending on how we think it's gonna land, but we will have the town engineer here, we will have. Ivan from the town attorney, you, um, you know, from Drake Loeb, um, and who knows? You know, we may even have someone from the, uh, you know, construction contractor here too, so, you know, come if you have questions about that. You know, construction contractor here too, so, you know, come if you have questions about that, um, you wanna learn more, um, we don't need easements from you guys. But, um, certainly you're gonna wanna probably hear about this, you know? Um, and then I guess just one more thing, as you know, we've been. The, the county's multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan has to be fully submitted by the end of the year, and so. The town and the village has been working, you, um, you know, working, we had like an initial meeting to kind of go over what our updates were gonna be to our portion of it. Um, the village was like present at the first meeting as well. And then the village have often like worked on their own with their engineer and has submitted, you know, I believe they've submitted their stuff to the county, we've submitted our stuff to the county. We were working with the town's engineering firm, Kelly Morris, the lead planner, Kurt Han, our director of emergency management, Tim McCarty's been involved. So we have basically, and how this works is, um, you know, we basically answer a bunch of questions and surveys and tell them, you know. Future hazard mitigation projects, areas where we've had issues in the past, we compile it. Um, we send it up to the county, um, who has hired consultants to take care of this, we've also given them some pictures of like the, you know, the, um. Of the road of, uh, Mill Street falling in, you know, we're not falling in yet, but, um, and hopefully we're gonna stop that, but, sorry, it's, uh, but, um. So that's, that's going to them, um, I think we have a really good product. Um, definitely wanna thank, you know, everyone that's been involved in this, because it really has been. We only look at this every so many years, and so it was kind of a very rapid turnaround too. If I recall, the county first got to us like. Wanna say Sept- September? Like late September and then all the municipalities kind of just went through as quickly as we could. Thankfully we had the engineering firm. You know, but I think we've got a good product, um, on Thursday. There is, um, and I don't know if you were copied on this, if you were, yeah, so there is the. For elected officials and elected leaders in Orange County, I think it's at two o'clock, um, I, I believe you all got the email.
It was three, four thirty, or thirty-six.
Sorry, yeah. So there's a elected leader one and then there's a public one, there's like two separate, so. I don't know which one you wanna go to, if you didn't get the elected leader invite, I'll, I can forward that to you, because that one's earlier than that.
Would you please?
Yeah, um. And so, and then after that, county will submit it and it'll be approved, then we'll be eligible for hazard mitigation money, which we all want. So. Alright, I, I don't have anything else to add, is there any public comment on anything before I adjourn the meeting? Yes? Yes?
Okay, I, I have a question, you brought up the December, um, second meeting for the people with easements, uh. Can you clarify, is that gonna be legal documents where they have to accept an easement on their property? Cause I know in the past that's been done with different projects, so that. There's gonna be legal documents signed between those people who it's gonna impact and the town?
Yes. Yeah, I, I would say what's gonna happen is, is that we're gonna have. All of the easements hopefully drawn up for the remaining properties, we've already been working on this for the six that we knew about.
We may not have the surveys, but outside.
Yeah, yeah, so, but, I mean, at a minimum, we're gonna hand it out, and if people don't, you know. If people feel like they want their attorneys to review it, whatever, I mean, they certainly have the right to do that. We're gonna hand out the paperwork, but we just think it's easier to bring everyone together, here's the paperwork, have someone from the town's law firm explain the process, et cetera. Have the engineer explain, you know, why we need the easement, where the project's going. Um, I mean, I would say this is really more informational, here's the easement paperwork. If you feel comfortable signing it that night, feel free to do so, if not.
Well, they can't, we don't have the surveys for everybody.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so.
But they can review it and when we have the surveys, you can either, you know, get that and then put together themselves or come back and put it together.
Yeah, I mean, thi- this is really our, our, our first attempt to try to explain to them. And then, you know, work out, I mean, we know, like, certain easements we have to get before we can start construction, we have a lot of them, but there's like some key ones we gotta get. Um, but I, I wouldn't say this is a, this is more gonna be, I would say informational.
Okay, I mean, I certainly hope that, that you're gonna let these people immediately, because they need to clear their calendar, this is very important.
Letters are going out.
Yeah.
Yeah, letters are going out, it's gonna go on the towns, um, we were just waiting to confirm. The town engineer and the town attorney before we could, because they have to be there, but yeah, so they'll be out, it'll notice like two weeks. Is there any further questions? No? Alright, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So.
Mr. Carter, Ms. Scott?
Yes.
No.
Seven Christ, yes, Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Wojciechowski?
Yes.